... The flag of the United States of America and the State of the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. I've chaired one meeting prior to this at the beginning of the summer. Mr. Whitney is not here tonight due to a personal matter. Thank you.
You are resting.
Yes. Turn it over to Dr. Harrison for any district updates.
Yes, I just really want to comment on two things tonight. Really, the focus of tonight's meeting was the on-budget. We added a little time for continuation of dialogue regarding field tests that we'll tackle after the budget. But there were two things that I wanted to report on tonight. The first was the New York State testing opt-outs. Obviously, it's been the front and center news and chatter in many communities. With today being the first day of the grade three through eight ELA testing, we saw approximately 42 students opt out out of a pool of about 809 students. So if you do that back-of-the-envelope math, we're just over 5 percent, which means we're just under 95 percent participation rate. So that data could shift a little bit once we firm up our numbers. But we could say that at this point in time, we do have some concern that our district did not meet that 95 percent participation rate that is required. You know, if those numbers are accurate and SED rounds from 5.22 percent down to five, we might be okay. But it's too soon to tell and it's too soon to see exactly what the consequences will be. But I do want to reiterate things that I've said in the past. The first thing that comes out that we should think about is that it's become commonplace for schools in Irvington to be named as reward schools for high achievement, that if we do not meet our participation requirement, I believe we lose that eligibility to be named as reward schools. That if we, in fact, are below 95 percent, we would be in the beginning of process with schools that are in the need of improvement and we would have to develop a local assistance plan that would be an action plan to improve student participation and with it carries a lot of reporting to SED. And then one thing I think that's really looming and it is, which should be a big question across the entire state, especially in light of some of the very highly-publicized numbers of the massive opt-outs in some communities where numbers that exceeded, you know, 10, 20, 30 percent of kids opting out, that if the state as a whole does not make the 95 percent participation requirement, the federal government could identify that the state hasn't met its requirements under No Child Left Behind and they could impose sanctions on the state of New York, including financial penalty. So you have to think how that trickles down to school districts. If there's less funding coming into SED in Albany, there's less money that would filter down to local school districts. So that's something that is out there as a real risk and a concern, but something that's a little out of our control here in Irvington. But aside from that, our first day of testing, having spoken to administrators in each of the three schools administering the exams, was that things went well and that we have a few more days of testing in front of us before we begin the mathematics testing next week. So our focus is on making the kids comfortable and facilitating the tests and not allowing the opt-outs to be a distraction. Our district continues to administer all the exams in requirement with state law. The other thing that I would like to speak about is that the high school is starting to unveil a new pre-prom experience that I think is really exciting and we talked about it at the CAB meeting today and I thought I would ask the high school team, whether it's Dave or Deb, to come up and say a few words about what you're looking to do. Please.
Thanks, Dr. Harrison. So it is really exciting. For the first time ever, we're talking about doing a red carpet event as a pre-prom celebration this year. And there's a couple of reasons and a couple of things to be able to accomplish this. Number one is to have a really inclusive opportunity for students to be able to celebrate their prom, for faculty members who typically aren't going to be at the actual prom, to be able to see our students dressed in their wonderful attire and the excitement that comes along with it, and even for parents to be able to come to a centralized place and be able to get involved in pictures. But obviously, one of the concerns that always comes about around prom is the safety and the potential for students to engage in risky behavior. So as a community and as a school, the ability to host a pre-prom here gives us a much greater ability to promote and foster a safe prom. So students not only would come here and engage in a pre-prom activity and a celebration, but through the community and through some grant opportunities, we would also then have charter buses that would take our students over to the prom and really foster an amazing event. As I said, it's going to be a tremendous celebration and a unique and new opportunity for parents and faculty members and staff members to be a part of it. And I certainly extend that invite to the board for any of you that might be available so that you can come and participate in the celebration and the pre-prom event as well. So thank you very much. I know we're really excited.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so we think it's a great idea and I have to say kudos to the high school team that proposed it. Exciting to see the support of CAB in the SAMSA group with I-Ask, when we talked about it today, to see the, in CAB, the enthusiasm around the room, not only from the adults but from the kids. And the perspective that the kids approached it from was just so mature and responsible and thinking about, yes, it removes some opportunity for risky behaviors, but there was that whole idea of inclusion and kids not being, feeling excluded because they were not invited to a pre-prom party. And the kids really got it. So congratulations, everybody, for playing this and special thanks to CAB, SAMSA, I-Ask, the whole group, whatever the identity is now. But it looks to be a great opportunity and we look forward to it. Hopefully, some board members will take Mr. Cohen up on the invite to come out and see the kids all dressed up. June 8?
Fourth.
Fourth? June 4th. So more details will come.
Okay, is that your whole report?
Can I?
Okay.
Question on yours, just a follow-up. When you talked about the opt-out numbers, I have a question for you about the absence. So if the kids are absent, how does that count toward the opt-out numbers for the district?
So we, the children that have opted out, we've had communication with the parents. We have a letter from the parents identifying they're opting their child out. If a child was absent, we would administer the test during the makeup period and they would count as a regular child.
And what if they don't take the makeup test? Like what if they're absent again or, you know, whatever? I mean, what if they were absent because they were kind of subtly opting out?
We would not have a valid test score for them and it would go down as an absence. It would not go down as a refusal. They're coded differently.
But no, but they're all coded the same. So I just want to, I thought that was a point of information that probably most people don't know. So whether you opted your child out or not, it's going to get coded as 999. So the state doesn't really want to know whether you opted your child out or whether your child was sick that day because they're not going to disaggregate that data. So...
Don't take the test, period. It'll count toward our numbers, essentially.
Right. So even students who were literally, who were truly sick.
Right. But if they were sick for both the regular and the makeup and they were absent, then as far as the state's concerned, they just...
Not tested.
We don't have data for that.
Not tested. Right. But there's still an opportunity for them to take it if they were absent and they want to. Yes. The makeup is there. So no student would be denied taking it, but I think just in light of where we are right now, it's clear that the state isn't even interested in how many of our students are opting out. Because if they did, they could have used a different code. They didn't have to use the same code.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks. And as special request, Mr. Grados?
No, I just wanted to mention that, you know, obviously, the community is aware of the attack that happened down at the train station last Wednesday. I'd made a point, I was in the middle of it, I was there, I saw it happen. And I just want to say that as a school community, as a district, if you see Chris DiPaoli, if you see Jimmy Egloff, who were both off-duty, Chris DiPaoli saved that woman's life. And I just ask that everybody, you know, look, these are both parents with kids in the school. Chris DiPaoli's children were with him, he was on the way to take them to a softball game, and he saved that woman's life. And, you know, I have not in my life seen heroism like that up close with complete disregard for people's own safety and including Jimmy Egloff, who of course is a police officer but was off-duty at the time and didn't have a weapon on him. So we have, you know, it's good to know that we have great people like that living in the district and our parents, the kids in the schools. That's all I wanted to say. Please shake their hands when you see them.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Moving on to our agenda, to our big item, budget discussion. It's mine. I was spreading it.
I have to say, this is a new pedestal and every time I move, the thing is clicking in the wrong place. My apologies. Let's hope that Ramon wants this evening.
Do you have a new?
It is a new one. It says on...
So much for that.
I know, it's a problem of mine, I would assume, so we'll try this.
Your jinx.
So anyhow, there we go. So obviously, and I'm not going to speak to this slide again, but again, like to include certain materials in the PowerPoints and the presentations, so should folks pick this up in isolation to viewing a meeting, attending a meeting, they will have some context. But obviously, we set out with some goals and objectives that really guided us through the process. And the process started back, started back in January and has rapidly moved to where we are today with different iterations of the budget, presenting it in different categories. Yeah, well, oh, my goodness. Hey, Jesse? It's convenient that you're here tonight. Can you come, please, help?
There it goes.
Yeah, it's a button, I think, that turns it off. But so we run different iterations of the budget. At April 9th, I think notably, we should speak to the board, asked us to come in, the administration, to come in with three different target areas. We prioritized asks that we had. We made a number of reductions that come in to try to hit three different target areas in looking at tax rate, 4 percent, 3.75, and 3.5 percent. Tonight, we're coming in with an additional round of modifications following what the board's charge was that was given at the last meeting. And what really the request was growing out of that was looking at a new request that is being directed by, the board came up from Mrs. Kerner, with a great idea to look at restoring the literacy coach position to be able to support teachers and enhance instructional opportunities in our schools and to also strive to maintain a tax rate increase of So in doing so, we had discussion last time around really two areas. And the first was taking a look at the literacy position and looking at a literacy coach. Dr. Core was quick to jump on this and work with our administrative team to map out a really rough concept of what this could look like. And a couple of high-line bullets here and then we can come back to more discussion later on would be that we're looking at focusing our efforts in grade six through 12 and that we're going to be focusing certainly primarily in English classrooms, but then looking at literacy instruction that branches out across the curriculum. Then we also had conversation with respect to the one request that administration had made with adding an additional security greeter at Dow's Lane, recognizing that we're going to have two functioning entrances at the school now. One would be at the front of the building, which will now become the new main entrance to Dow's Lane and will welcome everybody near the new main office. And the other would remain where it currently is today at the side entrance, which will be the district office entrance, but also the handicap access for Dow's Lane. We had a lot of conversation last week and I shared my thoughts and thinking with respect to safety and having folks wandering through the building to be able to ensure that we did not have contractors and other visitors that are just coming to the district for district business, wandering through the building and interacting with our children. But also to be able to support folks that, with special needs, that needed handicap access to be able to let them in the building. An interesting idea came up in this room at the last meeting on Thursday and thinking about looking at possibly replacing that with a part-time clerical employee that could provide other types of assistance and support to the district office. And we identified that the cost would be comparable, but really, the concerns that we had that tied directly back to where this ask originated from was in and around the management of safety and security of the school. And in doing so, we had some limits and concerns that continued to come up in the time that we've had to review this. And thinking about, it's only a half a day, so we have to recognize that for another portion of the day, there would be no one there manning that post, that in essence, there would be someone that would be buzzing in, that would either have to come to the main entrance of Dow's and go through the school, or would buzz in and then have one of the clerks in the district office come out and receive them. Challenges there, of course, as I noted before, safety and security. But when we also look at having a clerical employee, we start to think about breaks and lunches that are required. With our contracted service, we currently do not provide those folks the breaks. They have lunch on their post and essentially have restroom breaks throughout the day. So we wouldn't have that same kind of concern there. I would think that moving forward, I would like to recommend that we continue with the security greeter plan as previously discussed, but be open to the idea of evaluating new ideas and opportunities as they come up and we begin to live with what that experience is. Once we move in the space in the end of August, we may see different opportunities that aren't there. There may be opportunities for reallocating staff, moving staff, coming back to that model that we are looking at with respect to having a part-time clerk. But I think this is one of those situations that moving in, I would be most confident with having a plan in place to ensure smooth operations and safe operations within the school. All right. So with that said, when we look up, we can see where we've come and the reductions that we've made along the way. Back on April 9th, we started off with a series of reductions, as you can see, that amounted to about $325,000. Coming forward today, trying to bring that tax rate down again to a target in the neighborhood of 3.5 percent, we made another series of reductions. And we're getting to a point where it's really challenging. At the last meeting, I think I gave a passionate plea for the items that we've included in the budget thus far and really striving for an opportunity to preserve them because I really believe they're essential for our schools and for our children. So the first savings, and you can see it's not a huge one, we're looking at reducing our textbook line. And in doing so, that does not mean we're not buying more books for our children. Beverly went back and took a look at the textbook line over the past few years and has realized that, on average, we've had about $5,000 left in that line. So by doing so, we're able to reduce it, to realize the savings and still fulfill our needs. We're going to reduce our painting budget. This year, we are stepping outside of what our original plans were, where Mr. Knowles has developed a painting rotation where we're painting all the corridors and classrooms throughout our school buildings over the course of a number of years. But we're trying to add some extra items into it, such as touching up lockers and things like that. So we've stepped back and we've made some reductions there for $16,400. One of the items that we've been really enthusiastic with, with our budget proposals thus far, has been the expansion of STEM programming and not only at the high school, but introducing some new opportunities at the middle school and elementary school. And when we were in this room last week, PTSA stood up and offered to support us. And since that time, Dr. Core wrote a successful PTSA grant, that the PTSA has informed us that they are going to be funding the iPads that would support the third and fourth grade program. So we're certainly grateful to the PTSA, not only for their assistance in this budget process, but for that obvious support of the Project Lead the Way program and the integration of more STEM studies across all of our schools. Associated with that, we have a figure of just shy of $23,000 that's tied to supplies related to this initiative. Dr. Core wrote a grant through an outside group that we should learn tomorrow, so we have our fingers crossed that we'll get some positive feedback tomorrow. And in doing so, we'd be able to offset this expense. If that is not the case, the PTSA is again willing to stand up and support this expense of approximately $22,000. So some great partners, once again, stepping up to help the district and to promote some fantastic learning experiences that are going to come down the pike for our kids. We also stepped back and took a look at one of the requests and modified it a little bit, and that was the clerical position at the high school that we've requested. And we're going to be a little creative and rather than looking at a 12-month position, looking at this is still a benefit, this is still something that we need, that we've reduced that from a 12-month to a 10-month position. Still going to give us the support that we need, but we're going to have to look at it a little bit differently in recognizing that it is going to be growth of, in a critical area and that it's going to have a huge impact still. So when we look at these reductions, we're seeing a total of $67,080 in addition to the other reductions that we've made along the way. But then, as you know, the budget process is one that's very fluid. And looking at it, Beverly constantly crunching her numbers, taking a look at fringe benefits, and she started to adjust some of the benefits based upon some actuals that she's getting as opposed to the estimates. And unfortunately, we are underestimating some costs at that point, so we had to add in approximately $5,700. And then, of course, is the addition of the literacy coach that we talked about last time. So with that said, aside from all those reductions, we've added back into the budget nearly $102,000. So when we look at bottom line, what does that mean to us? The conversation that we've had about the budget-to-budget increase, looking at the tax rate increase, we're looking at a new budget total of 57, 664, which is a budget-to-budget increase of 2.43 percent. And that translates to, and board members, we got pretty close to the 5.4, or 5, 3.5 with a 3.54. So I think we've come up with a plan. Still is providing outstanding opportunities for the community. We've come up with a plan that's going to benefit our kids, it's going to enhance the operations of our schools, but did so at a reasonable tax rate increase with a responsible budget-to-budget increase. And I want to draw your attention to that number down at the bottom that we have underlined there, that we're under the cap by $384,000. That's pretty significant. You know, there's some of the critics of tax cap legislation, thought that schools were always going to run up to whatever that cap number was. And our board has opted not to do that. So we're, some could say you're leaving opportunity on the table, but the board has taken a position that it's certainly have to manage tax rates and the impact on our community. So with that said, this is an overview of our budget-to-budget comparison, looking from last year to this year. And you can see that we have, we're showing a budget-to-budget increase just over 3/4 of a percent. And I guess there's some things to point out that we have to be mindful of the fact that some things aren't quite push-ahead or carry-on from year to year, so there's some cost variance there. But at the end of the day, if you look at the bottom right-hand side and we're going code by code, we can see how we arrived at that figure of 2.3 percent increase budget-to-budget. So and again, looking at this in a little bit of a different way and integrating where our revenues are coming from, we can look at the current budget on the left-hand side, the 1415 budget, and then of course, making the comparisons with the 1516. And coming up with that number of $384,000 below the tax cap. And I want to draw your attention to the notation that I've made on the bottom, that there was a permissible tax cap here of 3 percent. And we are really only at a point of 2.22 percent. Just another way of illustrating the responsibility of our Board of Education. So when we're talking about variance here associated with the revised budget and as it pertains to the, looking at the tax rate here, we've been making an effort to draw things out because we're recognizing because of tax certs, we're seeing shifts in the assessments in the community. So we've been trying to differentiate where the tax rate increase is coming from and differentiate what's based upon the budget and what's based upon the changes in assessment. So if everything was to remain the same and if we're looking at this year's situation, we'd be looking at a position where we'd be seeing a tax rate increase of 2.11 percent. But unfortunately, because of the shift associated with tax certs that have happened in our community, is where we're realizing that difference of the 3.54 percent. So just a quick illustration of what this may look like, and again, these are estimated values. So you could find where you think your home may fall and to see what that estimated impact may be on your taxes. The bottom line highlights the average assessed value of a home in the community, which is And then finally, an illustration quickly to look at the budget trends over recent years and to see where we stand today. Looking at the budget increase, which I think is worth pointing out, the 2.43 figure in the middle, which is certainly going the right direction from where we've been the past couple of years. And then, of course, a very responsible approach on the right, even considering the challenges with the change in assessments in the community. So where we are again is back to the board. This is Kashkin. And really, going from the charge to the administration, back to the board, tonight we have to make some final decisions, certainly questions that we can, that can be asked, conversation among the board and comment from the community, of course. And as we head into that discussion, I would just like Dr. Core maybe to take a few minutes and speak to the literacy coach position and some of the thoughts that have been developed since last Thursday on that front.
Sure. Did you give these out?
I haven't, yeah.
All right. So in a second, you'll have in front of you a job description. So I was able to meet with most of the administrators since our last meeting and we talked a lot about what we think made the most sense. Just again, 10 seconds of history, we used to have a K5 literacy person and a 612, got narrowed down to a K12 and then to nothing. In looking at our programs, we felt that at this point, with the implementation of Common Core, the interest in differentiation, ensuring that we are meeting kids at all levels, certainly our high interest in writing and ensuring that our kids are ready as readers and writers, moving on to college and career, we felt that the 612 position would be a more beneficial position for us right now. Perfect world, there'd be two. This isn't that, this is almost perfect, though, actually. So 612 would be, we think, very advantageous. The person would be supporting literacy across the content areas. So as I shared last week, I said nine, it's more like 15 ALA teachers, special education teachers, but we'd also be looking to support teachers in social studies and science, in reading and writing. There's clearly an expectation as our students graduate from Irvington High School to be able to read informational texts, textbooks. We've certainly gotten feedback from our students who have left here that not all of their writing skills are where they need to be going into college and they're not ready for the rigor of reading. So that's not a criticism of our teachers, it's just, it's a shift in program that we need to make. And we think that this is a person, this role would help us in supporting our teachers in this transition. Okay. Well, thank you. Last Thursday, Mr. Whitney gave, and the board gave you a... Last Thursday, Mr. Whitney gave, and the board gave you a charge of coming in at 3.5 with the literacy coach. That was our wishes, and I thank you. I think you almost hit that mark. Almost. I'm going to turn it over to our board for discussion, and I'll just go down the line. Bob?
No, I'm very happy that the administration complied with the board's wishes from last week, and I'm happy with the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Ramon?
Maria and I actually had a curriculum meeting earlier, and we actually talked a little bit in depth with Rena about this. And there's just two things that I wanted to, that we talked about, two things that I wanted to pull out. And one is, I think we talked a lot about how this position would help differentiate in the classroom. So, you know, to me, that was important, that we'd be able, the literacy coach, in addition to all these things, would also be there to really help meet the needs of all the kids and all the learners in the classroom. And that was something clearly I was looking for. And then the other thing that we talked about is, I guess, to me, I had said how it was important to me to know that if a need developed with this literacy coach, even though it's kind of looking for a secondary higher, possible be able to go down into maybe fifth grade if there was a need. And we talked about how that wasn't necessarily the, you know, the job description, since you needed to narrow the job description, but that, of course, there would probably be some flexibility in the day-to-day. And if we saw there a need, then we hopefully would have that ability to shift the direction that they're working here. So those two were important. And then I just had a question about state aid. Changing gears, but thank you. Obviously, I feel passionate that this is really right in the classroom and will help the students in learning and hopefully raise the bar of instruction, which is something that's so important to the board. So. So shifting gears, I just had a question about the state aid number. I'm assuming no new information, one way or the other? We just haven't heard anything else?
We received, to the latest information, 119,000 more. So the adjusted figures are included in this estimated budget revenue?
That was from last week.
Yes, yes. It has been increased.
And that's probably, that's all we're going to get before next, before we vote, it should be next week, we don't anticipate getting any additional.
No, there would be, the only change would be after we filed the final reports, because some of the state aid is expenditure-driven. So then it would change depending on our expenses.
I guess, I kind of agree. I think we gave you a charge. Overall, I think it's, you know, it's a good budget. It's, you know, for everything we're getting, it seems like, you know, I feel like at least we're getting, I feel like, a range of services, and we're able to add back some things that we've taken out back in 2009. So whereas I think 3.5 is pushing it, I feel that it's, I'm happy with what we're getting for that spend. So I'm, thank you, and I'm actually pretty good with the budget. I mean, of course, we could find a way to save, and we would, of course, be for that between next week and this week, but I think it's a good budget, and I think it will be good for our students and good for the district.
Mr. Montgomery?
Budget-wise, yeah, this is what we talked about, so with rounding. One little niggel is the, what you're doing in textbooks is saying, oh, on average, we've over-budgeted for this in recent years, so you're going to reduce the budget, right? In that area. Not really reducing spending, but just reducing the budget.
Allocation.
There must be other areas where we, on average, over-budget, because we know we over-budget generally, right? Because then we plow that money into reserves and tax certs and all sorts. And on average, we do that every year, so it stands to reason mathematically, we, on average, over-budget a number of things. So it's kind of just, to me, it's, yeah, you could always do this. And probably do a lot more of it if you feel like it, but we're going to take it out of reserves or tax certs in the end. You know, we're not spending any less, right, by doing this. So that's the little note. On the, so that's budget fine. You know, I think that's where the board is, and I'm happy to go along with the consensus of the board on the budget. You know, I would be somewhat more fiscally conservative on this than some of my colleagues, but I'm very happy to go along with what we have. I think we're doing, it's, it's a good budget, I think. On the, I have one question on the literacy coach, in that I, my, the talk of supporting differentiation in 6 through 12 gets my attention. And it relates to the overall concern I've, I think I've also expressed to some of you about, about what we're doing with regard to ELA in the high school, where we're kind of backing away from some of the, the different, the differences in levels in various ways, especially through the elimination of the honors, the half, half semester honors class and for 11th graders. What are we, how do we talk about, how do you think about differentiation when you also have a separate honors program from a non-honors program? And I think there's also a program to address kids who need extra support already, isn't there? So in that context, where we're not unlike the rest of the grades, where we're talking about a single classroom with all ranges of learners. In high school, we already have differentiation by essentially tracking kids. So what does, what does the literacy coach do in the high school setting?
So I just want to clarify, no matter how many tracks we have, there's always a need to differentiate.
Within the tracks?
Because there's always going to be different needs, different levels, different types of learners. So, and also, especially in our AP courses, we have open enrollment. So I'm not so sure that our classes are, even when we do that designation, are as homogeneous as maybe some would want or some wouldn't want, depending on your slant. I think the role of differentiation is, or the support that we can provide for teachers is that ability to understand how you use different texts. So not every student has to be reading the same text. So I would actually like to see our, our more advanced students really could be reading more sophisticated texts. And even sometimes in our honors classes, they're not reading something as sophisticated. So I think we see the need for differentiation at all levels, whether students are mixed or not.
The feedback I got from somebody today about the AP English is...
Is what, I'm sorry, John?
That somebody was disappointed with the quantity of reading in the AP literature class. So maybe there's a scope for more differentiation of that, possibly.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to, so can we look forward to hearing more about this as the, the plan? This will be implemented for the fall, I guess?
Yeah. I mean, one of the things I would just point you to in this job description is, and I would, and I...
Didn't have a chance to read it.
No, and that's why, so when you're reading it, one thing I'd just like to say is, it's truly, it was a draft put together very, very quickly. So should we, you know, be fortunate and be able to move forward, we certainly would be developing this and sharing it with you at a much more detailed level. The other thing I would just point out is, as you're reading it, is we've broken it out carefully into two sections, which is general expectation. So it speaks to the literacy in the English classroom, and then on the backside, within the content area. So I think that that's a really important piece as you read it.
And would this person be going into the classrooms, do you think? Or really working with the teachers behind the scenes?
Working in classrooms, both.
And really, from 6 through 12, conceivably? Sixth grade through AP, or whatever? Okay, thanks.
Is that it?
That's it.
Good? Okay.
That's all folks.
You kind of touched on it, but I just wanted to bring to both John and Bob's attention, when we discussed this document in executive, executive session, excuse me, in our curriculum meeting today, the Rena and Chris met with the building principals yesterday. We had our meeting last Thursday, which is when the board had asked them to explore this. They met yesterday, and then this, this is a draft, basically, is what I want to say. So don't, when you read it, just keep that in mind. And of course, as Rena said, this will be flushed out more once the budget, you know, we adopt it and it gets approved.
And I would just reiterate that it'd be good to hear more about this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Before it goes forward.
Yeah, it is near and dear to our hearts here on the board.
Exactly. Okay.
As are the other areas. It's first among equals.
I thank you for all of your efforts and building principles and administrators for this budget. I think it's a very smart budget. I appreciate you coming in very close to that 3.5 that we had asked for, including the new ask of the ELA coach, literacy coach, not ELA, excuse me. And I am too very pleased with this, with this budget this year. I think it's a very, very smart budget and great for the kids. So, moving on to our discussion, oh, do you want to take questions now about the budget? And then?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions and comments, I think, yeah.
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to tie it in together afterwards and follow.
There's not a lot of folks here.
Okay. So I will open it up to our community and anyone who has questions about our budget, or any other agenda, any of the agenda items.
Well, to the budget now, and then the field testing afterwards.
Okay.
We should write a budget poem, they could do that, too.
Feel free to go to the mic, ask any questions.
Can we talk about the opt-out?
That's next.
That's next.
That's the next item.
We'll get there.
Budget questions.
Hearing none?
Let's move on.
Before, before we move on to field testing, I get to say, kind of, certainly want to thank the board and the, it's been a process, I think, that moved pretty nicely this year. So thank you for your partnership in it. But I want to look to my colleagues in the audience and to my right, and thank everybody for your outstanding support that got us to this point, because it was your creative thinking and our collective capacity that delivered this product. So thank you all very much, and of course, a big shout-out to the PTSA for their support. That helped us find a good amount of money to get to where we are today. And of course, to Rena for writing both of the grants. And hopefully, we will be successful on the outside grant so we can spend the PTSA's money on some other things.
Hope we're going to spend it.
We will. So the next field testing.
Four point two, discussion of field testing.
Yeah, so we promised that we wanted to continue the dialogue in and around field testing. And certainly, Mr. Oli, we could maybe integrate some of your comments and thinking into this, even though it's a little different, opt-outs and field testing. But I think we can allow the conversation to evolve a little bit. But let's start by focusing on, on field testing a little bit. Specifically here in Irvington, we've been notified, and even though I don't think, Randy, you've received an official letter from the state yet, I did receive a letter that was summative, but we didn't receive a specific letter for Dowslane. We have been notified that the state would like us to administer the grade-three mathematics field test, grade-six mathematics field test, and the earth science regions field test. These exams are to be facilitated in the first week of June. So we're not looking at doing it next week or the week after. But there's a lot of discrepancy here in what the guidance is, and really kind of leading districts to make a decision. As I've reported in, in previous meetings, specifically with regard to the earth science regions, when we first received notification from SED, and this is going back approximately a month ago, and Mr. Cohen shared that information with Dr. Core and myself, I immediately reached out to SED and using an email address that they provided to ask questions about administration, policies, so on and so forth, and asked them specifically for legal citations requiring school or district participation in standalone field tests, and the explanation of any consequences for a district that would face, a district may face for not administering these field tests. I can say that through four efforts on my end, I did not receive a response. And then after we received the sixth-grade notification, I just picked up the phone and kept calling and calling the Office of Assessments, and then finally spoke to one individual there. And this was last week that we made the contact. And again, I asked the questions that I asked in email, again, asking for legal citations requiring school district participation, and any consequences that would come towards a district for not administering the tests. This individual was not just a hotline person, it was someone with some influence and rank. And she explained that she would have to get back to me with respect to those requirements and consequences. But ultimately, she stated that we hope that you administer the tests. If not, keep them secure and send them back to us. I asked her again to provide guidance, and she was unable to do so, and said she would do some research and talk to her colleagues and get back to me. She called back the other day and left a message with Ms. Cardia, pretty much just stating what she said to me on the phone, indicating that when you receive the tests, keep them secure, pack them up and mail them back to us. Not being satisfied with that as a response, I called her again yesterday and had the same conversation, and she once again indicated that she hopes that we administer them. So they had some talking points. And then I specifically asked for guidance, and she said, we have no other guidance for you. We just hope you administer them. And I said, so where does that leave a school district? Someone that's trying to do the right thing. But it also has conflict about our wishes as directed, you know, towards our kids and how we're spending that time, and considering the value that comes back from these tests for a school district, which is none. We don't get reports back. We don't get any details. Our teachers and administrators don't see the tests. This is essentially, you know, a trial for SED and test developers, and we don't receive information that helps us at all. But yet, we volunteer time out of our school day, an instructional period for this purpose, a time in June after we've gone through the bulk of the school year, but really just to do an R and D effort for SED and their test developers. And I told her that I needed more clarity. The only thing that she was able to do, and, and it's the only thing that really comes up on record, is points us to a memo on the opt-out subject, where Mr. Stephen Katz, who is the Director of the Office of Assessments for the State Education Department, in talking, within the context of talking about opting out, talks about the requirements of a school district to administer the tests, and talks about consequences for Boards of Education and administrators who choose not to deliver the tests as a part of the opt-out movement, different than the field test. But then he also adds that all schools that administer state operational tests are also required to administer field tests associated with them. So that language comes up one time, it's been identified in a memo associated with the opt-out movement, nothing specific to the field tests situation. So we're in a position that I think the board needs to reflect a little bit, and I think we have to do a little digging within code to look for where these requirements may come from, and possibly consult our legal counsel. But right now, I can say that SED is able to provide no direction. You know, to quote the woman that I spoke with on two occasions, we hope that you administer them. Again, asking for guidance, we cannot offer any, and just points me to one sentence within a, a letter from the Director of the Office on another subject. So I think there's some searching here. There's a risk benefit that the board has to be, consider, and I think we look to delve into that potentially a little bit deeper. But I think there's certainly some community members here with thought, and I'm sure board members have some opinion on the subject. But I think we have to really assess where we are with our legal responsibility. A number of districts around the area, I should add, have stated that they are not going to administer field tests. I spoke to superintendents of districts who did not administer field tests last year. They indicated that they saw no consequences for their school district. So I think that's certainly an indication of what to follow, and there's certainly a growing trend of folks not participating, and some are our local neighboring districts. But we shouldn't necessarily allow those examples to be, you know, to make a decision for us. So I think there's a little more legwork that we have to do before we make a decision, and maybe a little bit of legal guidance for the board. But the one thing that is clear is that SED does not have the capacity to be able to support us, and is willfully avoiding those requests to be able to provide us. support us and is willfully avoiding those requests to be able to provide us with more guidance.
Okay. Shall we start with you again, Mr. Grados, for comments?
I'd let the community, I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Oly?
Okay, before you do, can you just clarify one detail? The tests take forty-five minutes apiece?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay. So, literally, the time, student time we're talking about is that much time?
Roughly an instructional period.
Right. For one out of every three, four grades.
Correct.
Okay, I guess I'll limit my discussion to field tests at this point, but my name's Eric Oly, I live in Irvington. It seems to me other communities are taking a stand, obviously, they already have, and the amount of communities that are left to actually conduct these field tests is going to continue to dwindle and dwindle the longer it takes us to make a decision. So, I think this seems like a perfect opportunity when we're not being threatened by the state with any sort of loss of funding to actually make a stand and say, "No, we're not going to administer these field tests." I think the amount of time they take is, makes no difference to me whatsoever. I mean, I don't want my children taking these tests. And in fact, it's already part of my opt-out letter that we wrote for the Common Core exams. I think we are in the position we are right now with the way the Common Core has changed the way we teach our children because the state has not listened to us in any way whatsoever. And it's about time that we stood up for ourselves, stood up for our children, and not just on the level of parents, but on the level of people in charge of education on a local level. Obviously, it'd be wonderful if people on the state level did the same thing and even, obviously, legislators on the state level. But I think the opt-out numbers that you see now are basically an indication that enough is enough because I honestly know a lot of people who would have opted out if they didn't feel like the school was going to be threatened with loss of funding. And to me, that's, the fact that the state would do that is inexcusable. You know, this is a very personal decision that people make about their children. I mean, you can't get any more sense of that to me. And I guess the one comment now about the opt-outs, I guess, is thank you very much for giving us the numbers and updating us on that. I don't think that it really serves any purpose for the district to remind us about the threshold and the five percent, the ninety-five percent, whatever, whatever. I don't think that matters anymore. I think people obviously know this because there was an official district document that went out on email before a lot of people decided to opt out. We've thought this through, honestly, my family, to use an example, we spent hours talking about this and I spent hours talking about this, not just with my wife, but with my children. And another example I'd like to use, which should, I think, frame the way we deal with people who made this decision to opt out, is I've been coaching Little League teams, I guess I've coached sixteen Little League teams, including baseball, basketball, and other teams, and I'm incredibly impressed with the young people in Irvington today. I know you hear a lot of the older generation complain about kids today, but I have not found that whatsoever. I've found, to a person, I've found really, really respectful, very sophisticated children and I'm very impressed and I think a lot of this comes from our own school district and it comes from the elementary school, the middle school, and all the wonderful assemblies that we put on about kindness, about respect, about anti-bullying. My son was yes involved in an assembly at the Main Street School that had to do with being a global citizen. And he stood up on stage and he gave a brief overview of different children from all around the world who stood up in their community and they stood up for a reason and they stood up for change. And I think that is one way to look at a lot of these kids who helped make the decision about opting out of this exam. And I don't think that their decisions should be taken lightly or the decisions of their parents should be taken lightly. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else with any comments or questions?
When Eric speaks, the microphone is tall. Can I be heard? Yes.
Sure.
My name is Beth Proper. How do you move it down? Oh, thank you. I want to thank the board and the administration, I think, in moving up to the current administration of the ELA tests in the district. I think the correspondence that was sent out really provided a fair-minded education to our parents about the fact that it was their decision to make whether to refuse or not and provided information about where they could look for more information. I just wanted to thank the board and the administration for that. As to the standalone field tests, I suppose that I've been sending communications to administration and not so much the board until this year about these standalone field tests. And I want to point out something that Superintendent Harrison pointed out, which is there is no value provided to our district by the information or data which is non-existent from these tests. Now, it happens to be my argument, the argument that I've made, that in terms of specifically the ELA tests that are given and created by Pearson and told that we must give by the New York State Education Department also provide insufficient, inappropriate data. But there can be arguments on both sides of that, as I've said in the past. But in terms of the field tests, no usable data. And I would say that in light of that, our children do not need to be spending instructional time doing something that is of no value to them or to the district or to education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Mara Ast and I have two children in the Irvington School District, fourth and sixth grade, and we opted out. I also teach, I'm a long-term substitute and it's very, very heartbreaking to watch children who are not in any way prepared to take the state test because they, well, I teach special ed. So, when you proctor a test with children who open up the first page and it is completely out of their range, I mean, there's no reason to take it, they should just shut the book, but of course, they can't. So, I experience that personally, I see that happen. So, to add even one more hour of this, you know, you might say, "Oh, it's just forty-five minutes," but that is once again putting those children, forget about the children who are going to do well, the children who shouldn't be taking the test in the first place, I would say if, I just, I just, someone has to come to their defense. And I am absolutely against field testing. For what? Not only does it not collect data, but I think it's really detrimental, it's a detrimental, bad experience for many of our children who already are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? One more, two more members of the community? No? Okay, great. I'll turn it over to our board for any comments regarding field testing.
Yeah, my only comment and, you know, I thank my friend Eric Oly for his thoughts and, you know, as a parent, I chose, well, I chose, my kids chose to take the tests, they actually wanted to. And so, it's a deep, you're right, it's a deeply personal decision with respect to families and I respect everybody who has chosen with their children through the discussions and their families to opt out. That's one side of the issue. The other issue to me, and it's just how I'm wired, is that, you know, I'm not convinced at this point and I've read everything that's been provided to us and I understand that the snowball is rolling away from districts having to provide these tests. But as fiduciaries for the district, not only the children, but also for, you know, stewards of our funding, stewards of our grounds, you know, the board has to ultimately do what's in the best interest of the district and that's why I, you know, if we can get sufficient legal backup, which I believe will be ambiguous, I'll predict that right now. I don't think there's anything, I haven't seen anything that's clear yet. And I'm, you know, because of the nature of this and the effects on our kids and the lack of true benefit for either the kids of the district through these tests, I'd be more than happy personally as a board member to support a, the district ceasing giving these tests. But before I could do that, you know, as a fiduciary, I want to have the backup, you know, from council to the extent we can, you know, especially regarding the issues that are mattered around regarding loss of potential funding.
Robin?
Do I go?
No.
Go ahead. Okay. Couple of things, I mean, I think one of the things that Eric said really resonated, which was that, you know, we have to stand up and I think we as individuals agree a lot on a lot of the points about, you know, the state testing and there's too much testing and, you know, until certain people put themselves out there and make a statement, nobody in Albany was ever going to listen. And now I heard on the news that about a hundred thousand people they expect statewide have opted out of the test. So, all of a sudden now, even though districts are, maybe run the risk of losing funding, Albany will listen and strengthen numbers. And I, you know, I personally feel that as a board member, it's my responsibility to, you know, to listen and I know a lot of people, as you said, it's a very personal thing about opting out or not opting out, but I think a lot of the budget items that came down from Albany this year have been concerning on a lot of levels. And until we put a voice together, both for Irvington or as a school board, then our voice is just not going to be heard. And it takes the people willing to step out, it takes the people willing to take a risk. So, that said, one thing that we didn't talk about, but with regard to the state, the field testing, you know, it seems to me that the, and I agree, look, if something legal comes down, I reserve the right to factor that in, but where we stand now, based on everything I've heard and everything that I'm hearing from people who live in the community, that it does not seem like there, right at this point in time, there's a lot of financial strings attached to opting out of the field testing and in terms of the, just the overall effecting of wanting to make a change. If we're not happy with the system, then I think we need to take a stand and we need to say, "Hey, if we keep just administering the field tests, nobody's going to realize that there needs to be a change." So, from that perspective, I guess as a board member, I personally would support opting out of the field test at this point. The other thing is that with regards to a voice, I don't think as a board, we've never, we've really never had a conversation as to how as a board do we feel is what our voice should be? Because I do think as a board of ed, we together have a voice that will be heard by the SED, by Albany, by Cuomo. I know Eric had actually posted something on Facebook that Scarsdale did as a board author a letter that went to Albany to talk about, I think the thrust of that letter, I believe, was how they felt that the, using the state test as the single data point to evaluate teachers was unfair and not accurate and not something they supported. And I would like to put on the table that I think we as a board need to now have a conversation quickly because of the timing of all this about how we feel about all of this and can, you know, do we feel comfortable putting together a letter that we as the Board of Ed of Irvington, representative of our community, can send to Albany on some of these issues if we agree, that we can have our voice heard? Because right now, I don't really feel that we're effectively doing that. And again, as a board, we would have to be a majority vote, it would have to be the, you know, we'd all have to agree. But we've never had that discussion and I would like to see us have that discussion and quickly. And if there's agreement, take a stand and let our voices be heard. That's how I feel.
Wow, what a complex issue. Let me take the easy part of it first. You know, look, on the, on the, on the field test, it's, you know, it's not like there's any, it seems like there's no reason we should be doing this, right? It's, you know, I mean, Bob's point and Dr. Harrison's point to think about wanting to see what our actual obligation is, is well-taken and obviously, we should. I mean, I think, given the sentiment in the community and, you know, I hear the fact that this is a really negative thing for at least some kids and the experience of testing and inflicting it on them is a concern that, you know, I haven't been aware of, but it's, that's an important point to make. So, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm seeing the reason to have the field test. I mean, if the option is just keep them secure and mail them back, that seems like a pretty easy thing to do, as long as we have a lock somewhere and a key. So, you know, that's the easy part. I think the overall opt-out issue on state testing is, to be honest, one, I, there must be a whole, it's not something I've followed closely, honestly, I don't understand, I don't know, I haven't heard the primary arguments of why the opt-out movement is occurring statewide, or maybe it's even broader than statewide. So, I don't feel I have a good sense of that. You know, I will say this, you know, I think it's a, you know, this, it's mostly right about, the tests hold sort of two purposes. One is to gauge kids' progresses and how they're doing and have a sense of what kids' needs are year to year, I think. And it's, they also serve as part of the teacher and I guess administration evaluation process. And we need to think about whether, you know, as part of this, one has to think, and the Governor Cuomo's budget obviously changed the mix of that toward much more, much more testing and much less district in the evaluations process. But we need to think about, you know, it's obviously behind that sentiment on the, in the state's view was presumably the idea that the existing system wasn't working adequately, right? And that's apparently presumably a fair concern, at least in some districts in the state. Maybe or maybe not, I don't know, but this is a statewide political issue. And the teachers' union has its view, but its view is obviously not necessarily the least biased view up there. So, you know, and we also have to ask about what function, you know, it's a fair question that we would have to discuss elsewhere about what we do in this district, how we use state tests and we use them substantially and as a board and understanding our progress. You know, I've made the point on the board that we should have other ways to assess student progress, just looking at test scores isn't enough, but we haven't done that and we need to figure out ways to do that. I don't, it's a little uncomfortable for me to say state tests are bad, boo, when we don't really know how to do without them very well. You know, I think in the district, we ought to be thinking. Yeah, if we've got a better solution, I'd like to hear what it is, I don't think I've heard that. So, so that's, those are my thoughts, I think it's a complex issue, I'd love to have a deeper discussion of it, but it's a complicated issue. And again, it's not something that I admit to having read deeply about or talked to people deeply about and I'd love to hear more perspectives and read more about personally. Thanks.
Can I, can I respond?
Or you want to let Maria go?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm in complete agreement with, I think, the board in terms of field tests. I have always felt the fact that we've never received any usable data from that, from the results of those, of that test for any of our grades over the years, that it's taken away time from the classroom, forty-five minutes, ten minutes, and two hours, I really, I don't care. I don't think it's worth it, that's my personal opinion. And as a board member, that's also my opinion. I do agree that I would love to see legal counsel's advice on this, but barring, and I suspect also, there is no regulations that guide us to, that forces us to give this, especially given, I believe it was in February that the Board of Regions tabled such a regulation. And they didn't take, they didn't even have the discussion. They didn't even, they didn't just table the vote, they never had the discussion. So, barring any regulations, I too agree that we, this district should opt out of administering the field tests. I want to circle back to your suggestion, Robin, that I made notes to discuss with Phil. I think it's a great discussion for this board to have at a future meeting soon about a joint, about a letter to Albany, but similar to a past resolution from like a month ago, I think perhaps Phil should also reach out to our downtown boards and perhaps this is something, it's not just the. something, it's not just the Irvington board can take on, maybe if we could do something joint, that all the districts around here, we could take up a similar resolution and send, well, this wouldn't be a resolution, but send a letter, and it could be signed by multiple school districts, I think, you know, numbers, that has powerful.
Be more powerful, yeah.
Yeah. And I think it's a great suggestion.
Just concerned about time. I mean, I mean, my thing is, I agree, it's a great idea, if we can make it happen over the next, like, two weeks. If it's quicker for us as a board to get something out, then...
Well, one is not necessarily contingent on the other, but simultaneously, we can reach out to our assistant districts and see if, and see if we can get more numbers behind. Agreed. Did you want to add something? You said you wanted to.
No, I'm just trying to figure out how to make it happen. I mean, I'm wondering if it's even a question of coming to the table with a draft, or circulating a draft so that people could see it, and then, you know, comment, I mean, just as a starting point, not as an input.
Well, I think that is perfect for our esteemed president. I think that's perfect for Phil's skill sets, I think this is something he could take on. And I'm volunteering him publicly.
We know where the buck doesn't stop.
Mr. Oly, do you have another comment to add?
Yeah, I apologize, just a couple more things to add. I think we should charge the state one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and then we can, we can rediscover whether or not to administer field tests. But also, in terms of state tests and Common Core, Mr. Montgomery, there are a lot of people who opt out who are not essentially against state tests. It's basically particularly this test that people are against. I am actually a supporter of the Common Core when it first was instituted in New York State, and I am not a supporter of the tests in its current incarnation. I like the fact that my children would be tested on a state level, I have no problem with that whatsoever. And another observation I've been making, over the last week, we've seen an incredible range of disclosure of information and even almost advocacy by different administrations and school boards as to talking about the Common Core. And I can only imagine that that range, that huge range, is a result of advice by council. And so I'm wondering if councils ever talk? I mean, I think it's incredibly important for administrations to talk across the whole county and the area, I think it's incredibly important for school boards to talk across the whole county, the whole area. Do councils ever speak? Do they read other people's opinions?
Absolutely.
And do they use that to form their own opinion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because, I mean, you see districts that were actually...
Isn't that cheating?
Well, there's less rules, I guess.
Can our council call up the council of the districts that have already decided to tell the state of SED that they are not going to administer field tests and ask what the decision is?
Yeah, I could tell you just, yeah, yeah, they do, they do all the time.
But we probably also have to rely on our own legal counsel.
Well, you have to rely upon what your council's going to provide, if you want to rely upon it at all, it's an opinion, right?
Right.
It's not necessarily fact, it's a council's opinion. But I could tell you that in dealing with the school council that we've dealt with over the past, at least I've dealt with for the past five years, you know, there is a group of them who represent a lot of the districts, and they make sure that everybody knows what everybody's thinking is, and they have that basis to then form their own opinion on the issue.
Yeah. Can I, can I just go back to one thing you said? When you say your, your concern is with the current iteration of the test, what do you mean? What is, what is your concern?
My concern, in speaking with several teachers and other educational professionals, is that it is not age-appropriate, it's not grade-level appropriate, it's more of a one-size-fits-all exam that I don't think services all the students in the community. I think it also can be used to drive curriculum and take away time from other disciplines that would be much better taught in the classroom.
But isn't that the issue with the Common Core? I mean, I thought this is...
Well, it's the Common Core tests that are administered by New York State. I think you can have goals, and you can have the way that the goals are taught, and then you can also have the way the teachers are evaluated from the results of those tests.
But is your concern about the curriculum or the way they're evaluated?
I'm concerned about both.
Okay.
I mean, I think a lot of, a lot of the curriculum is driven by the importance put on the tests, and the importance put on the test can be driven by the percentage of test scores played in the APPR of the teachers, definitely. But I'm not...
Which is not the case this year, but it will be next year.
Yeah, well, twenty percent is still a lot more than it used to be. But testing on, a lot of people are not against tests per se, definitely not.
Okay.
And I think a lot of teachers are not against tests per se, teachers that I talk to, and a lot of teachers not against being evaluated in a fair manner, either.
I know, teachers have been known to administer tests on their own.
It's Beth Proper again. I want to speak about the iteration of the test, as you described it. So just to clarify something, historically, in 2011, Pearson and the New York State Education Department started creating a different test. This is the test that was supposed to be attached to the Common Core. Now, I'll say something. I am one of the people, along with Mr. Oly, I support the Common Core standards. I have been thrilled at how successfully this district has managed to take, well, as Raina Cora once said, our ELA standards before Common Core were Common Core standards, and we're able to continue that. I've been to meetings from Mr. Lipton Walner, where he explained clearly how we were going to be able to work with fiction and nonfiction within the Common Core standards. With the math, I was a big naysayer in the beginning, as some of you know, at the meetings. I have seen the teachers get up to speed with the math, the Common Core standards, but this is a different issue. The issue is the tests. The tests are not sufficiently creating, A, a test of what our children are supposed to be learning, and what they should appropriately be learning. Sorry, I'm starting to mispronounce slightly because I'm getting emotional. Okay? Pull that back. They don't test the children on what they are appropriately learning in our classrooms. And if we continue with this particular group of tests that were created by Pearson through a contract with NISID, and which they keep bringing to us, we will continue to have problems in the classroom. And as the, right now, we're doing very well, but as the percentage of the evaluation on the teachers goes up towards fifty percent, then you're not going to have room in your classrooms to continue the type of education that we're proud of in Irvington. Because if you're going to take fifty percent and put that into the evaluation of the teacher using a test that doesn't appropriately assess our students on what we all agree they should be learning under the common standards, then you're going nowhere. And just, just to clarify, you need to only go back to 2011. My son is going to NYU in September, he was educated in Irvington. I am very proud of the education he got here, he took standardized tests. He luckily did not have to take the standardized tests that started to be given to these students in 2011. Tests where the data is not shared, tests where the data comes late, tests where the teachers are not allowed to share what they see, tests in which Pearson occasionally will track what students say on social media about the tests, and ask school districts to, to punish them, basically, for talking about the tests. We are talking about a different iteration, and it is the post-2011 iteration. And I just want to say one other thing. When parents became involved in refusing the tests, and I will not use the term "opt out" because the School Education Department has said there is no such thing as opting out. Well, there is no such thing as opting out, but there is a right to refuse. And when people confuse teachers' unions, which we may or may not support as parents, we may feel uncomfortable with things about tenure, or about how we analyze how our teachers perform, but parents have brought about this movement on their own. Parents have communicated with parents, I have communicated with parents in other school districts, and we have educated ourselves about the problems with this specific iteration of the tests. And if, and that is what I want to say, about the iteration of the test, I guess, sorry. I went over.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. If anyone else has any comments? If not, moving on, next meeting of the Board of Education is next Tuesday, April 21st, where we will recharge with adapting the budget to present to the community in May. Seven thirty here. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, good night.
Good night.
Good night.